I call the Dixon County Regular Meeting to order, March 8, 2018. Please stand and flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the line of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd move we approve the agenda as printed with no additions.
I'll say it then.
Been moved in second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Consent agenda, minutes of the March 1 meeting, payroll of $290,710.28, and wire payments for capers of $44,609.17.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Commissioners' comments and committee reports. Laverne, you want to go?
Yeah. I did attend the conservation meeting that Conservation had on their programs for this next year. And there's, I guess, a lot more programs maybe than what most people realize. That if you have a unique situation, that you could sign up for a program. And I kind of suggested that maybe to get that information out, they could work with the extension service and maybe put on some meetings together or something to encourage people to get that kind of information out. I did sit in with the teleconference that we had on finance. And I say that was interesting as far as procedures on bond rates and interest and those type things. That's all I got.
Thank you, Laverne Lynn.
I attended that Conservation meeting also. And it's one of those programs that does reach out to individuals in the county. And there's some that are able to take advantage of it. And I thought it was kind of interesting is pretty much every application they had, it seemed like, had been approved. And sometimes, some regions of the state do not utilize it as much as what we do here in Dixon County. But there is room for expansion on that as far as people participating. So it was an interesting meeting. That's all I have.
Thank you, Lynn. Our work session today, our zoning, Tim Holmes. Tim. Tim was in and...
Hamilton.
Yes, Hamilton. Actually, I was going to say, Tim Holmes.
We need name tags.
Smith, Tim Smith was in. Then we had our department head meeting after that. Also like to make note of, the fact is that March 19, the Rain Road Bridge construction will start. There will be signage there. Everything goes right, it will start that day. Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And it will be one-way traffic?
Yeah, no, it'll be controlled. Controlled. Controlled traffic.
It'll be both.
Both ways.
It's through one-way, it'll be both stoplights.
Yeah. We have no petitions or preconceptions, committee reports. We'll wait for public comments. And we have our, I think, Matt and everything here for the CPU zoning request. We'll move on then. Brad, you want to give your report?
Yes. You have your packets, your invitation to the North Central Kansas County Highway Officials Association. And one of the things you need to get at that meeting, shorten the name of the organization. That's on April 4 in Concordia. And we've got the agenda, I think we've got a pretty good agenda put together for that day. So, and everybody's scheduled to be there. So, the Kansas County Commissioners Association Conference is May 1st through 3rd. I'm assuming you'll all three want to attend that. So we'll get you reserved for that as well. It's in Wichita, the middle tree. You have in your packets also the year-to-date budget reports. They're fairly preliminary, being in the beginning of the year. But on the sales tax, it is up a little bit from the December sales tax, both on the regular sales tax and the quarter or the half-cent grid sales tax. Up to 100, almost 103,000. So that was, that's good for the month. We, as Diane said in the department head meeting, she and Dawn and I attended, actually went down to Harrington, attended a job fair at the school on Tuesday. It was not very heavily attended. We had a couple of people from the public that came. But we had, I think, six companies there that were interested. And so it was the first one that we actually had hosted. And so it gave us some ideas. We're going to try and do one at the three schools here in Northern County as well, coming up in the near future. So if nothing else, maybe we'll get some exposure for some of those kids that are thinking about what they're going to do after graduation. So we pretty much hit the bridge projects. We'll go into those again. But like Craig said, March 19, Rain Road, that would be a big one there. The good thing is it'll be open through traffic. So that's all I got.
Thank you, Brad. Any questions for Brad?
Can I comment?
Yes.
Just south of Chapin on Rain Road. We have visited with the elevator folks there, and they indicated they approved it.
Tom was approved.
Tom Hasli. Tom Hasli for that. Any questions, Laverne Lynn? If not, Doug, do you have anything for us?
Tomorrow, we will finalize, officially finalize this last tax sale. And then deeds will go out. And then pick up the packets to begin the next one. So that process will begin again.
Thank you.
All I got.
Thank you, Doug. Mail, communications. We've got our assessed valuations and appraisal here. From, I don't know how many's in here. Tim, you want probably 40 or 50? I don't know how many.
This is 35.
35, okay. Pretty thick packet. We got a letter from the State of Kansas, the Department of Transportation. Was addressed to the City of Ablean, Dear Land Sradar, Subject K-425201. In effort to reduce printing and shipping costs, the burden of local projects is sending the preliminary plans electronically for corrective purposes. I'm not sure that'd be the project after the North 14th Street?
Probably.
I would say 14th, luck on that.
Yeah. Three letters, got a deal from K-Works, Weather Advisory, when their board meetings are, Department of Labor compliance, on-job site training suggested for skid loader operators, a couple magazines, government, government technologies, and then from Janelle. Summary of our budget for this year that we've spent so far this for the commission. Introduction considered resolutions, resolution 030818 on... The security issue we're having, Brad. You like that?
Yes, this is the official policy that you will adopt or consider adopting that enacts the courthouse security changes that we've been affecting today. And that covers everything from the access entry or access control to the security personnel, metal detectors, and things like that to provide a safe environment for the public and staff here in the courthouse. I think I gave you a copy of that a couple weeks ago.
Yeah, I'll read here the first couple sentences. Whereas, Dixon County Commission is charged with the duty to act in the best interest of the citizens of Dixon County and provide a safe and secure environment for its employees, staff, and members of the general public who enter into the Dixon County courthouse. And whereas, the Kansas Personal and Family Protection Act of KSA 75-7C01 authorized the board to provide adequate security measures by restricting access to the courthouse, whereas preventing entry into the building by anyone possession of a weapon of any kind. I'll make the motion to approve resolution 030818.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any other discussion?
The employees that work here. I guess my concern is they can bypass the security out there.
Again, if they have on their identification tag, as well as certain other factions.
Lawyers.
Lawyers that are approved in our system, if they have an identification tag that are members of the local bar, the post office, a delivery person, wears identification photo ID. We've told them they can go around, they don't have to stand in line to come through. So there are a number of people. If they've already been approved, and there are people that we know that are either work here, have function here, that's, they're good to go, so.
They don't, they'd have to have identification.
They've got to have an identification on, yes. If they come in and that particular security guard crew doesn't know them, then they're going to make them go through the metal detector. So it doesn't matter whether it's you, me, or whoever. So, and that's what their job is. But all they have to do, important is policy for our employees is that we are required to wear that now. So, and we haven't been required to wear them before, so.
I guess my question is, if we have a concern about a certain person, we can take that security badge away from them?
Oh, absolutely. And also, if you read the one paragraph in there, it says if a department head or elected official or a judge of the district court has a concern about someone, they can request that that person, even if they're wearing their identification, you can request and instruct the staff to have them go through the metal detector. So I would hope that we have a staff member, wouldn't have a staff member, that we'd be that concerned about. If we do, we need to take it up long before we're ready for them to come through that point. But yeah, if it comes to the point where we're going to be taking an ID away from them, probably not going to be employed here, so.
Any other questions?
That's all I have.
Not, a motion before the board. All of them in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We have no unfinished business. Other business, I'm going to skip down. And we're going to do the review and consideration of Kevin and Gina Dalton's key of U.P. request first. You want to go ahead and highlight, Tim?
This is for PC 18-1. Consideration of a conditional use permit to operate in the event venue at the request of Kevin and Gina Dalton at the address 2256 Deer Road. On January 18, the Planning Commission opened a public hearing in consideration of the above referenced request. The hearing was continued to the February 15 meeting, at which the Planning Commission recommended approval in a 6 to 0 vote to allow an event venue at 2256 Deer Road with the following conditions. External lighting must be directed within the boundaries of the subject property. All noise reduction measures as proposed be implemented. Applicant must abide by all local, state, and federal safety regulations pertaining to the licensing of the facility. Noise reduction measures listed above reference structural insulation of the exterior walls of the facility as proposed by the applicant. Since the February 15 hearing, the applicant has consulted with the fire chief of the responding department for that area and has devised a fire plan for the facility. The staff has received five protest petition forms. Four of the submitted forms were from properties within a thousand-foot notification area. Therefore, a unanimous or supermajority vote by the commission would be required to approve this use. The options available are to approve the request with the conditions as submitted, approve the request with additional conditions as deemed appropriate for this use, or deny the request. And if you choose to deny the request, the reasoning for denying it has to be based on the submitted review criteria in the staff report items A through K.
Anybody else like to speak to the issue? Want to come up and take your name and your address, please?
My name is Mary Pets. I live at 2271 Deer Road. There were five petitions that were submitted. Four of them, three of them have children that are under the age of, just had one under the age of one. Two of the other ones have young children that are under the age of four. And they are concerned, but unfortunately, because of being home watching their children, were not able to attend. So they are aware that I was coming to speak on behalf. The concern is that there are no ordinances within the county. There may be ordinances within the city for noise, alcohol, and fire. We are on a rural dead-end road that has, there can be no pond. It will not retain water. We actually checked on our own personal property to see. And we were told that he could dig it, but it won't hold it. So we're all, we're on a well. And the fire restriction, or the burn issue is of extreme concern because there's only one exit out of Deer Road. And, you know, at 10 o'clock at night, if you have a fire, people that don't live there, they're not going to remember that they saw a sign, if they even see it at the end by Deer Road, which I appreciate that they put up that says dead-end. But when you're in a panic, are you going to remember not to go to the right? Because the road does go a little bit to the right, and then all of a sudden goes into a pasture. Are you going to remember that? I know I probably wouldn't, to be fair. So the fire, the fire issue isn't of concern. The road is of concern. When I was coming down, somebody nicely did a nice big burnout at the end of the road. And there's about that deep right now of a little, which of course, I managed to hit on the way here, and praying I didn't damage a rim. So the road is of concern. It is a sand road as far as it being maintained. Does the county require a certificate of occupancy?
No.
No. No, I didn't.
Well, I do, I'll take that back. It is, we do require a C.O. for like new construction of housing and new, brand-new commercials. So I would imagine I would probably submit a certificate of occupancy as it relates to a building permit, but there was no need for a building permit since this was an existing structure. So I would say it's, I could issue one, you know, and do a walkthrough. But again, having no ordinances in place, I mean, I would just be doing it contingent with the requirements, the conditional use.
I checked two other counties that are of rural nature that are adjacent to us. I checked Marion, and I also checked Clay. They both require certificates of occupancy in the county level. Clay also requires a certificate of occupancy on the land if they're going to do something different on the land as well. Marion has accessory uses. Both had comments within there that they couldn't have noise. This facility is planning to have an outdoor pavilion. Did you all see the map? So there's an outdoor pavilion. Sound carries a great deal out where we're at. There's not hardly any trees. This past weekend, I was sitting in my living room couch, and I said to my husband, "What is that noise?" And it was the train. He said, "That's a train." And we're down, I think, 1.2 miles from the end of Deer Road. So it will be noisy for us. And I speak for myself, and I know that our next-door neighbor that just moved in in 2017, we both spent three and a half years trying to find our properties, trying to find a property that we liked, a home that we liked, and to live there. And we knew that there were dog farms there, and we knew there was agriculture there. We respect that completely. But what we didn't do is we didn't move to have a wedding venue in our neighborhood, so to speak. There are other venues in our area. There's a new venue that just opened up. I believe it's in the Chisholm Trail area. They just had a grand opening. There's the Eisenhower Boyle Room. There's the Civic Center. There's churches. Shockies and Landys, the venue on Broadway is very small, but it is a venue. The National Garret and Stirl Hall. I probably missed something. I just quickly put together a list that I could come to in my mind before I came back. In addition, county Article 26, Section 26-105, the factors that are supposed to be considered for a conditional use. There are A through M, not A through K. So there are two that are missing. I did not spend a great deal of time looking which two. But if you look in my notes that I had given you earlier from 215, one of them was in regards to water and sewage that was not listed on what you're going to be voting on today as a reason for not having it. And it was discussed at the work meeting that a risk versus osmosis was being looked at. And I, in my opinion, no public facility should be open if we cannot have safe drinking water for the people that are coming there. There are little kids that, well, they don't even have any idea. They'll go get a drink. Mom and dad are off over here. Yeah, we were told not to drink the water. But are they going to remember? Are they going to understand the ramifications of it? In addition to the fire on the emergency management website section of the county website, the North Central Kansas Multi-Hazard Multi-Jurisdictional Mitigation Plan is there. All 800-plus pages of it, which I went through quite a bit of it last night. And there's a calculated priority risk index that each of the 12 counties that were participating. Of the 12 counties, the county that ranked wildfire as being of a number-one concern was Dickinson County. Again, I'm going to go back to the fire. It is of probably our greatest concern along with the noise and alcohol consumption. So I did speak to the undersheriff as far as the, you know, we would have to call. I didn't go out there to police any neighborhood as far as underage drinking. As far as, back to the occupancy, and I apologize, back to the occupancy. Is there more than one exit in the building?
There's three.
There's three, okay. All right, that's good. So, let's see. And I guess in closing, I would just like to mention that, you know, if any one of you were a homeowner that lived on that road, how would you vote if it involved your parcel and the reasons that you moved out to the country? This is a dead-end road, and I'm going to say it again. Okay, there's not two accesses for people to come out. You go down to the end of the road, the left-hand turn out of that road is on a curve. It is a dangerous curve. And it is, you know, of concern. And I, we gave you all of our, on our petition, we did do a group petition for the most part. There was one family that wrote something different. And that was in relationship to the dog farms that they had written. Sorry. And they had actually added in that impregnant females might abort from commotion. They tend to fret from July 4th noise, high winds, and loud noises. So they just put a comment that's bad for the dog people. Was there any questions on any of our petition reasons? The vandalism potential is too of great concern. Our next-door neighbors that did move in on, well, they're down to the closest house to us. They had had their property vandalized when we were in the middle of a move. And they lived out in the country where they were at. But people saw that they weren't there and vandalized. So not everybody that's going to be coming to these venues are going to be of, you know, character that might not think about doing something like that. Unfortunately.
Any questions? Any comment you'd like to make, Tim? Anybody else in the audience care to speak about the issue? Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you raise your hand here.
I'd like to address some of the concerns that she brought up.
It'd be helpful for her to be at the podium, and once we've heard from one.
I'd like to address some of the concerns that Mrs. Pets brought up. The children, the new children in the neighborhood, four new kids. I grew up on that road. We raised over, from all the families that lived on that road, approximately 25 to 30 kids on that road. In its heyday of 12 or 13 Greyhound farms on that road, trucks, trailers, service vehicles, delivery trucks, a lot of traffic on that road when we had a lot more kids than what are on there right now. The three homes, new homes where they moved into, if they're concerned about the roads, they have large swimming pools in their backyards. They need to watch their kids around the pool if they can't keep them off the road. Fires, we have had our sheriff fires out there. I actually called on the last one and said, "Can we please take my dad's matches away?" Because he was the instigator of them, but he's no longer able to do that. There was a large fire this summer out there that burned quite a bit of the road. As a property owner, I was not notified that that fire was going on. Fires happen. We live, the interstate is just north of us. Lots of noise, traffic. Somebody can flick a cigarette out when they go. Pastures on fire. We have, we have no control over, over that. There will be no smoking in the facility. There will be a small area outside on a gravel patio for smoking. The water, the water is not labeled non-potable water, if that's what it is for not drinking it. Like I said, I grew up out there. I drank that water every day. I still drink that water every day. I was pregnant with three, well, three children, but one was back east, so two children. I drank that water every day. I still continue to drink that water every day. The only water that will be used out there will come from the kitchen, which I will have a reverse osmosis filter on. So if they use that water, they're not going to go out and drink water out of the hydrant outside that I drink out of. So I don't consider the water an issue. I think I do, I have three exits. The firefighters came out, the Solomon Fire Chief and two others. One of them was the one that's the inspector now. They, all three came out. They said, "With the size of the building, I have more than adequate access or exit. I have the large front doors when you come in. I have one on the side, and I have an outswing door at the back of the building." So they said that there's adequate, adequate access in and out of the building. Plenty of parking. I think, I think that's it. I think I addressed all of her concerns. Thank you.
That was one thing kind of helpful on the map they had drawn up or drawing. It showed off-road parking. So are there, how many spaces to handle some of that?
Where I showed you guys where we took out the runs and that's parking. But then also, if I can come up here because I can't see so far away. So that's all parking, and that's parking. But if I have to, I own all of this. And I have gates here. I have, they can, I can run people out there and park. I have all of this. I have wide enough gates, I can run. There will never be a car parked out on the road.
Doesn't need to be.
There doesn't need to be a car parked out on the road.
And Tim, you say twice, the group met on this, and then the votes. You said it was 6-0?
Yeah. And it was continued to the 15th of February. And that's when they took their act.
Any other discussion before we call for a vote? No other comments from the audience. I move we follow the recommendation of the Planning Committee, Planning Commission to approve PC 18-1. approve PC 18-1.
I'll second it.
Been moved in the second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried. Thank you for your time. Consider approval dating the county policy 605 on weapons?
This is an amendment to our weapons, to our personnel policy dealing with weapons, and it coincides with the changes now that we made to courthouse. Because if you remember, in the Family Protection Act, under the state law, if we didn't secure the courthouse, we couldn't prevent employees from carrying firearms. But unless it interferes with job performance or duty. Now we can, so this basically just changes a couple sentences in that policy that says if the building is, is marked accordingly and dealt with accordingly, which now the courthouse says if employees can't carry firearms in the building, obviously unless there are a law enforcement officer, or we have given them specific permission to do so.
Any other questions for Brad? Not, I'd move that we approve the updated policy to 605 on weapons?
Second.
Been moved in the second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried. Consider approval of application for real property tax relief from Chad Duer regarding destroyed home in Chapman?
This is an application of real property relief, applying, the applicant is Chad Duer for residence at 131 East Third Street in Chapman. The home was destroyed by a fire on a particular date, 10th and 2nd. So, let's say it was like April last year. Well, at any rate, it's yours.
2017, though.
Yes, yeah. 615 of 17, yeah. So if you recall, when we had the tornado damages, the state changed the, or passed a statute that says that if that occurs, and they're not able to utilize that property for natural causes, or any natural, or any declared disaster, they can make that application. So he has made that. It does meet all the criteria according to the president's office, and so it needs to be considered for approval.
I move that we accept the approval of tax relief, property tax relief for Chad Duer on his home.
Second.
Been moved in the second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried. Consider approval of repair parts for the courthouse chiller system.
We talked about that briefly in the work session, but I, I previously told you, and the information that we were going on was that the chiller, well, let me back up. We, we, our chiller system operates with two compressors in tandem, and it could provide air conditioning service for the courthouse. That particular system, we had one of the two compressors failed last year, so we operated for about half the summer on one compressor, which is a little bit dangerous, simply because of the fact it overtaxes that particular compressor. And if it goes bad, we have no air conditioning. And it takes, under normal situation, it takes a substantial amount of time to get one of those compressors built and ordered, ordered, built and delivered. We were told at that time, they thought it would take, you know, upwards of $60,000 to replace that and get it installed. I met with Chansey and our contractor last week. They did some checking, and actually found one compressor in Wichita in the warehouse, luckily. And he gave us a ballpark number of around $16,000 to get that purchased and installed, which is obviously a better number than 60. With that, I gave him the go-ahead to move forward and go ahead and get it coming, because if that happened to go somewhere else in the United States, why, it might be upwards of eight weeks to get another one built and in. So, and we know it's going to take some time for them to get it installed and tested. And knowing we wanted to do that before it got warm enough that we needed air conditioning in the courthouse. So at the time when we put this on the agenda, I thought it would probably have a hard bid number. We don't have that. I've got a ballpark number, because as, as the contractor explained to me, we don't know exactly, once we get into the system, what it's going to take. It could vary upwards or downwards of a couple thousand dollars. But at any rate, I wanted to let you know, whether you want to approve that or not, but that we do have it, we do have that word, and it's on its way, so.
And that $16,000 supposedly is going to cover the installation also?
That's installed and everything, yes.
But it could change the installation cost.
It could change, depending on whether they have to evacuate totally the other, the other side, if there's any, a lot of times when those compressors go bad, they throw material and debris contamination into the system, and they evacuate the whole thing, which it uses the old freon, which is, you know, is extremely expensive. So there's some variables there. If he doesn't have to evacuate the whole thing, he's not going to, so. The nice thing about that is we're only going to have to pay for what it takes to do it. If we would've gone to hard bid, then of course, anybody that bids is going to be in worst-case scenario, that's all we have to pay. So we're monitoring and negotiating with him as we go along to get it done, so.
I have a motion to give Brad the authority to proceed with what we've already done.
There you go.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Been moved in the second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried. What we've been waiting for is 2150 Bridge. Martin John, who wants to take it?
The 2150 Eden Road is the bridge over the Smoky Hill River at the Sand Springs area, obviously on Eden Road. That bridge deck has deteriorated. We have bids on that deck replacement, and we will take the concrete deck off, add shearstuds to it, put a new concrete deck back on it. And you have bids before you for the, for that bridge replacement. And the low bidder, Bridges Inc., the bridge is incorporated from Newton for $699,196.15. Their bid and their qualifications have been reviewed, and we have a recommendation to award that bid. And we so recommend.
I know we've had Call Valley out there. I mean, you know, there's no problem with the piers and the head wall, it's just a deck, right?
Correct.
Okay. So there's no, no unseen circumstance that might pop up. Well, I mean, there's nothing, let me rephrase that. Nothing.
You definitely answered that question.
Yeah, nothing certain for sure. The best of everybody's knowledge, there's nothing there that's...
We think we've found everything, and are working on everything.
Yeah.
You had mentioned to us at one time that that deck is not really secured, that those pillars, the way it should be, and you're going to do something different about that in this process?
Okay. What you've got there is a beam that sets like this, and the concrete sets on top of it this way. We are adding shearstuds, which are bolts sticking up. The concrete will surround that, so that the steel beams and the concrete deck will be tied together. That will actually increase the carrying capacity of the bridge a little.
Before, it was just kind of a floating deck.
Correct.
Yeah. Any other questions?
A little bit the time that this will take, and then your plan to notify signage or people in the area on the work being done?
It can potentially start as early as the first part of April. We will sit down and work with the contractor on the schedule for that bridge. The completion date is going to be the end of September. When they close it, they'll close it on either end. There is provision there that the closure is notified far enough out that folks can find their way around. We do not have a designated detour. If there was, it would be Solomon Road or K-15. Those are the closest bridges that there are that cross the river. Notification will be all the public information we can get out, and the public media, and Twitter, and Facebook, and as many as we can find, we'll get the public information out, as well as the sand company to the south will be notified, and those folks that are right close there will be notified. As far as funding, this will be, this and the next one will be paid for through our sales tax. We currently have about three-quarters of that on hand, and by the time these projects are underway and are done, we'll certainly have more than enough on hand to pay for this one and the one that you'll consider next. Funding is available. This is absent sales tax that the voters approved in 2014, so. These are the first two bridges we've done from that, from that sales tax as well, so.
I'd move that we do this deck replacement for 2150 Eden Road Bridge, and based on the bid totals we have here, the low bid of Bridges Inc. out of Newton for $699,196.15.
I'll second it.
Been moved in the second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried. Virginia, consider bids for the 970 Union Bridge total replacement.
Okay. Except for the details of the bridge, the rest of the story's the same.
Different bidder.
Different bidder. That is old 77 Highway from the 1920s. That bridge has reached its limit in age. You all have had the opportunity to be below it. Some of you have seen it. Similarly, there is no designated detour, but the signs will be at Woodbine and down at K-4 Highway. And the local folks that are there, right, have already been notified. And again, we will use whatever media is available to get the word out. This is what's going on. I will say that we have, rumors have already started down there, and we've had some phone calls. And yes, we've told them this bridge is slated to be reconstructed, subject to you guys' approval.
What's the timeframe on that?
That one also is potentially able to start April 1st, and we will work with those folks to select a completion date. The latest they can finish again is September the 30th.
The window, though, is like 120, 150 days for...
For that bridge, it's 90 days.
90 days, okay. Other two commissioners, any other questions for John or Martin, or Brad?
And you checked the contractors, L&amp;M?
They're a good contractor.
That's the low bid.
That's kind of interesting, they're got... The one that we just approved for Eden had the low bid, and they got the high bid on this one, so.
Yeah, well, that's a story to be told.
There's a story to be told, right there.
You were there at the time that it happened?
Yeah.
And those folks had a concern that they would not be able to do both bridges simultaneously. They selected the one that they wanted.
I see.
I suspect, although they didn't say it in so many words, that if they got the second one, they would've hired somebody else to do it as a sub. I can't say that for a fact, but they wanted to...
So that's the reason why they bid higher on this one?
They purposely bid high because they preferred the one that they got.
Yep.
It's the one they wanted.
I'd move that we do the bridge replacement for 970 Union Road, and for the bid sheet we have here, go with the low bid, L&amp;M Contractors, Inc., $483,911.60.
I'll second it.
Been moved in the second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried. Anything else to come before the commission today? If not, all...
Where's L&amp;M from?
Craig Ben.
Thank you.
I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Wait.
Nope, what, what? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't even...
Oh, I'm just observing, but I'm now some later executive director of the chamber. I just, I hadn't been to a county commission meeting. I went into camp and observed, so.
You're always welcome to come back.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that. I just, like, fun to watch. Fun to watch, yes, you are, thank you. In fact, I see the plaques back there so much, so.
We need to get that 2018 on there, so.
Good job, good job. Now, now, I was just here to observe, so thank you.
I'd move to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Been moved in the second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried. Stand adjourned.